Thank you, please be seated. Thank you everybody for coming this afternoon. It's lovely to see the chamber full, it's absolutely great. And it is a little bit with sadness that it's my last meeting today. And unfortunately, I came without my glasses. So I must say a great big thank you to the Chief Executive who's let me his space. And I can only see if they're on the end of my nose. I've only got three pair and I forgot them all, but never mind. The first business of the annual meeting to be transacted is to appoint the Lord Mayor for the Municipal Year 2018-2019. I can confirm that one nomination has been received for the office of Lord Mayor for Can I ask councillor Allen to move that councillor David Down be elected Lord Mayor of this city for the ensuing municipal year?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and congratulations on completing your year in office.
Thank you.
Now, I have great pleasure in proposing councillor David Down to be Lord Mayor of Newcastle upon time for the municipal year 2018-2019. I know that David and Barbara will be excellent ambassadors for this great city and that they are both looking forward to representing us all at the many events that are planned for the forthcoming year. They are both caring and hardworking people and will be a credit to the city. Although David isn't a Geordie by birth, he is one by adoption, as he has embraced the city and its culture, especially, I'm pleased to say, by supporting Newcastle United. But he can look a bit puzzled when I talk of Wyn Davies and Jimmy Smith. Though, as he originates from Portsmouth, he does remember Alan Shearer playing for Southampton. As a young man, David worked for Portsmouth Council in various positions for almost ten years. Then during a sabbatical year, his involvement with Initiatives of Change, an international charity dedicated to peace building and reconciliation began. More than thirty years later, he is still involved with this charity and it is a very important part of his life. David is married to Barbara and they have two sons, Chris and Andy. And Chris is married to Ju Lin, I've probably totally mispronounced that, so apologies. And I know that both sons look forward to playing a part in helping David during his year in office. David and Barbara met in London while working with Initiatives of Change and moved to Newcastle upon receiving an invitation from community leaders, including Barbara's parents Rex and Betty Gray, to help improve racial equality and interfaith community relations. David joined the City Council in 1999 as councillor for Castle Ward. Then in 2004, he was elected to represent Woolington Ward, where he worked for three years. In 2008, after a year off the council, David was elected to represent Parklands Ward. And because of his concern for the area, he can often be seen photographing the problems that he finds around the ward and sending the photos to Envirocall. He loves meeting people and, as Robin and I both said last year, he thrives on attending coffee meetings and fairs. He mixes with everyone and it isn't unknown for the three of us to be chatting amongst ourselves or to residents on street corners, as we do, to find that David has wandered off to look at something he's noticed that needs attention. So he will go the extra mile for residents because he has a sense of duty and he has persistence and that will be seen during the coming year. I do hope though that the Lord Mayor's office knows what they're in for, as he can be a little forgetful and can mix up the dates or times of appointments. So I'm really pleased he's here today. I look forward to helping David and Barbara whenever I can over the coming year. And I know that David will make an excellent Lord Mayor. I am honoured to propose councillor David Down to be Lord Mayor of Newcastle upon time. Thank you, Lord Mayor. Good day, councillor.
Can I now call on councillor Ashby to second?
Lord Mayor, it's my delight and privilege to join councillor Allen in endorsing our colleague and friend councillor David Down to be the next Lord Mayor of our great city. There is no finer honour than to have your name engraved on the wall of the Puget Room and to join the list stretching back to 1216, when our predecessors purchased the right to have a mayor from an impecunious king. I echo everything councillor Allen has said about David. He's a hardworking councillor who's focused on the needs of those he's represented so well over his years as a member of this council. He has a happy knack of being able to relate on a one-to-one basis with those he's just met, a quality which will stand him in good stead over the coming year. He's retained his slim figure despite, as councillor Allen mentioned, the many coffee mornings and church and other charity events he's attended at home and abroad. And he's challenged himself to stay that way. David is a man of integrity and service, like his father, who won the Military Medal for bravery on the Atlantic convoys during the war. And as a Portsmouth man, now a proud adopted Geordie, I'm sure he had a secret smile at the news in the last few days that the Liberal Democrats have taken back control of Portsmouth City Council with the support of the Labour Party. Fellow councillors, David Down will treat all of us with fairness, patience, but underlying firmness. He will represent us well in front of our fellow citizens and other authorities. He is a fine choice. Those who know me know I never back down, except today, I backed down. Lord Mayor, it's my pleasure to thank you for your service to the council and city over the last year and support councillor David Down to be your successor.
Thank you. I declare councillor David Christopher Down to be duly elected Lord Mayor of this city for the ensuing municipal year. The new Lord Mayor, David Christopher Down, will now make the declaration of acceptance of office and take the oath.
I, David Down, having been elected Lord Mayor for the city of Newcastle upon time, hereby declare that I take the said office upon myself and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties thereof. According to the best of my judgment and ability, I undertake to be guided by the Newcastle City Council Code of Conduct in the performance of my functions in that office. I, David Down, do swear by Almighty God that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty the Queen, Elizabeth II, her heirs and successors according to law. So help me God.
Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you.
We need, Lord Mayor, we need to sign.
Oh, sorry, yes, I've got to sign something, excuse me. Okay. Excuse me, want to get a few notes just in front of me. But first of all, can I thank you for electing me to be Lord Mayor of this great city? And can I express my congratulations to you, Linda outgoing Lord Mayor, over your year of office? You've been a superb ambassador for the city. You've actually helped me learn some of the responsibilities that, well, I'm still learning now. I wish you well as you embark on representing the new ward of Callerton Thruckley and your colleagues as well. Thank you all for giving me the opportunity to be Lord Mayor. It's a great honour. I will carry out its duties and responsibilities with great joy and to the best of my ability. Without a doubt, it's going to be an unforgettable experience on top of the many years I've had in public life. There are some significant events and occasions coming to the city and the region. The Great Exhibition of the North will lead the way. This will bring many people, a fair number for the first time, to this city and to the area. The welcome and hospitality they will experience will leave a lasting impression on them, as it did me when I came first in the 1970s. Councillor Allen mentioned my longstanding interest and involvement in the ideas of Initiatives of Change. Not long before taking my sabbatical year, after ten years in local government in Portsmouth, I accepted the truth that, at that point, my life was going off the rails. And the friends already involved in the life-changing work which they were in invited me to ponder the question, was it the way that I lived and treated others adding to the problems besetting society or helping those around me and providing the answers to the problems? Following various actions and restitution, apology, recovery, it led me to finding a faith and making myself available to care for and encourage others. During my year of office, I would do my best to chair council meetings impartially and to the best of my ability, hoping that I do not meet the same fate as John de Denton, who was Lord Mayor between 1341 and 44. He obviously outstayed his welcome because the Burgess has murdered him. With that knowledge, I've already made sure that my life insurance payments are on standing order. To be able to do my best, I know I will need the assistance of my wife Barbara. And I would ask that she be my Lady Meress. When Barbara is not free to accompany me on civic engagements, I wish to be able to call upon the assistance of my ward colleague councillor Pauline Allen, also the following friends and family, Rona Cross, Mary Ashby, Jean Sayers, John Hewitt, Christopher Down, and I'm going to say it incorrectly sadly, Chris as well, Joalind, and Andrew Down. Also, I wish to appoint, as my chaplains, Reverend Ruth Hewitt and Major Mary Balsall. I have chosen two charities for supporting this year. The first one is Action Foundation, which was started by Julian Prior with the support of City Church in 2005, in response to the needs of asylum seekers, refugees and other migrants in Newcastle who were homeless and not able to access English language courses. Without a safe and stable place to live or the ability to communicate effectively in English, many people in our city are unable to lead independent and fulfilled lives and are very vulnerable to exploitation and abuse. Action Foundation supports people that become homeless following the decision of their asylum claim. Last year, it helped over a thousand people through their housing and English language projects with the support of over 170 volunteers. The charity particularly looks for people who have spare bedrooms in their homes and compassion in their hearts. When trained, they host homeless clients for a short period. There is also a need for volunteers to help support the English school. So if you think you might help, please take Action Foundation's impact report, which has been on your chairs, and read it and be in touch. The lives of hosts and guests are enriched on the help that each gives and receives. The other charity is a particular branch of Mental Health Concern. Mental Health Concern has supported people with mental health challenges in the North East for over thirty years. It's been a charity since 1986 and it's proud of its North East roots and heritage. It's come a long way from its small beginnings. During the period, sorry, if we fast forward now to the 2000s, Mental Health Concern developed ways to help people in their own communities through a number of day services and activities. And this is the particular aspect of the work of Mental Health Concern I'd like to support, Moving Forward model. They've got a track record of helping people back to work, education and other meaningful activities. Thank you very much. Now, what have I forgotten, something, I'm sure. Let me just have a look. There is a phrase, "The palest ink is better than the strongest memory" and I'm just looking at the palest ink at the moment. Okay, yep, thank you. I think you're doing better than John Sofie at times. Okay.
I'm not clever enough to be John Sofie.
All right, okay. We go to item number two on the agenda, please, to appoint a Sheriff and Deputy Lord Mayor for the municipal year 2018-19. I can confirm that one nomination has been received for the office of Sheriff and Deputy Lord Mayor for 2018-19. May I call on councillor McGinnis to move that councillor David Burford Cook be elected Sheriff and Deputy Lord Mayor for the ensuing municipal year?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and congratulations. And can I just add my congratulations to the outgoing Lord Mayor for a brilliant year? So it is an absolute pleasure and an honour to be able to nominate councillor Dr David Cook to serve as Sheriff and Deputy Mayor of our great city. As many of you will know, David Cook is originally from Sheffield, but is definitely an adopted Geordie. We will forget the fact that he still supports Sheffield United, but never mind. He's been here since 1963 and, as you might gather from the doctor in his title, he was a lecturer in clinical biochemistry at Newcastle University. It was in Newcastle where David met his wife Liz. Now, at the risk of turning this into a bit of an odd best man's speech, I'm going to tell a little bit of a story about this. David put himself forward to be Lord Mayor. We all know the process, he came to the Labour Group, we were very delighted to have David be Lord Mayor and his nomination was confirmed. Now, one might assume this is something that we would have a conversation with about, with his spouse. Not David. Liz remained blissfully unaware and enjoying her retirement until David was happy that his election was won and she found out about her new job, presumably as consort, on election night, which I think is an example of the modesty and the good humour of the man. Anyway, it's great to see Liz here as well as David and Liz's two children, Stephen and Catherine, their partners, their grandchildren Charlotte and the rest of the Cook clan, who I'm sure will all assist David in his duties in the next couple of years. David was elected in 2010 to Leamington Ward and is a dedicated ward councillor. He knows the community inside out and he's involved in many, many community groups and organisations, as well as having a fantastic knowledge of the local area. Certainly for me, who was only elected in 2015, David's really supported me on that journey and helping me to become a good councillor and I know he'll do the same for our newly-elected colleague Kyle. He serves with great passion and knowledge on a number of committees, probably most notably planning, which, again, David's knowledge is really outstanding and he really helps us in the group to get a grip on that. As well as being an elected councillor, he serves in the community and is a Chair of Governors at War Bottle School, where he's led the school through challenge and change over the last few years. David's other major passion is cricket and he plays for and is massively involved in Benwell and War Bottle Cricket Club and is committed to promoting the game in the club in the wider city. In fact, and this is where we'll talk about his encyclopedic knowledge of pretty much everything, the amount of times that I've said to Dave, "I've met this person" or "this resident" and he can tell you what cricket club they play for, what their last run score was, how many wickets they took and what year and date the game was, which I think is pretty outstanding and will surely in some way serve him in his year as Sheriff. This spreads to the city, where if actually you're out with David and you're doing a street surgery or you're out and about doing a walk around of the ward and you're interested to know what the origin of a street name is, he's just the one to ask because he knows the ins and outs of everything and he's definitely someone you want to have on your pub quiz team. Anyway, I think as in a role that will welcome thousands of visitors to this great city, that will stand him in good stead, as well as humour, wit, knowledge and the fact that he just is a genuinely great honourable guy. David will be a natural fit for this role and, like I said, it is a really proud moment for me, I'm sure for his family, for the group and for our ward Leamington, for me to be able to nominate him to serve in this role. Thank you.
Can I call on councillor Webster to second, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And can I offer my congratulations on your appointment today? I'm sure you will enjoy your year ahead. I'm very pleased to get the opportunity to speak at this very special meeting of council and to be given the opportunity to second the proposal for my ward colleague, David Cook, to be the Deputy Lord Mayor and the new Sheriff in town for the municipal year ahead. I have known David for some years now, he is kind, supportive and does his best for our local community. He works hard in the ward and I'm looking forward to learning from him. His commitment to his work on the council is a credit to himself and his residents as is his work in the community as a volunteer and a governor. I know that he will be a supportive deputy for you, Lord Mayor, and that he will continue to be supportive for us in the ward too. I'm really honoured to second this nomination for David. I know he will do our great city proud.
I declare councillor David Burford Cook to be elected Sheriff and Deputy Lord Mayor of this city for the ensuing municipal year.
The new Sheriff and Deputy Lord Mayor, David Burford Cook, will now make the declaration of acceptance of office.
I, David Burford Cook, having been elected Sheriff and Deputy Lord Mayor for the city of Newcastle upon time, hereby declare that I take the said office upon myself and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties thereof according to the best of my judgment and ability. I undertake to be guided by the Newcastle City Council Code of Conduct in the performance of my functions in that office.
Okay, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
I think you just need to sign.
I don't have to do the letters.
I think you need to get a photograph.
Thank you. So, just a second.
Thank you, David. May I also add my congratulations to you on being elected as Mayor? I look forward to being your apprentice for the year. May I also thank my colleagues for electing me to be Sheriff, the job post I will undertake the duties to the best of my ability. And finally, I couldn't have been on the journey that has ended, or not ended yet, but resulted in me being in this position without my wife Liz, who is, I can't see her, she's sitting over there somewhere, and she will be the Sheriff's Lady. Thank you very much.
Can I invite the retiring Lord Mayor to give a vote of thanks for her year in office?
No, it's a...
Sorry?
The Leader of Council gives the vote of thanks.
Excuse me, Leader Dick, can you at the back, please, remove that little bit of tape? Thanks very much. I flipped up two, have I? Right. Things can only get better, as they say in a song. Can I call upon councillor Nick Forbes to propose a vote of thanks to the retiring Lord Mayor?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm not retiring Lord Mayor just yet. And can I also add my congratulations on your election as Lord Mayor? And can I also add my congratulations on your election as Lord Mayor? Tell us next year. And can I also add my congratulations to David Cook on his election as Sheriff and Deputy Lord Mayor? A couple of years ago was the first time, I think, in living memory that we'd had two women on the top dais as both Lord Mayor and Deputy Lord Mayor. This year we have two Davids, which I hope doesn't cause a huge amount of difficulty in the Lord Mayor's office. But I think the fact that we have two people, one from Portsmouth, one from Sheffield, elected to serve the highest offices in the city is a tribute to the success that anyone can have here. It doesn't matter what your background is, it's what you achieve of your time in Newcastle. And can I wish you both the very best of successes in your years ahead? Can I also, just in passing, pay tribute to my colleague councillor Webster, who had probably the toughest gig of all today, because it's traditional for people to come to at least a couple of council meetings before they have to make their maiden speech, and to be plunged straight in to do it before you've even been formally introduced as a councillor. I have to take, take some guts, so well done, Kyle. And Linda, it's our opportunity now to say thank you to you for a magnificent year in office. The role of Lord Mayor is always an exciting one, and there are always things to do. But Linda has overseen some significant milestones in our city's history, as well as guiding us through a number of very significant events that have brought us all together. Joined by her lady meress, her daughter Hayley, who I think celebrated a significant birthday pretty recently, and also her husband Colin, who's been an absolute stalwart support throughout her year. Linda has been an absolutely magnificent figurehead for all our city stands for over the last 12 months. And her busy schedule has seen her as an ever-present feature in the highlights of the civic calendar, from the opening of the Hoppings to the Great North Run celebrations. In fact, I also remember puffing and panting my way past Linda on the Blayden Race as she rang the bell for the start of that. I think that was one of the first sporting events that you got to preside at. Sadly, both of us are missing it this year. And her, she of course attended the Chinese New Year celebrations, which comes with it the honour of the eye dotting ceremony for the new dragon. Another thing that is never in the job description, the things that you have to do as Lord Mayor. Throughout the year, she's met her fair share of celebrities, from Joe McKeldry at the turn-on of the Christmas lights, to Cheryl, I'm not quite sure what we call Cheryl these days, but Cheryl, at the opening of a new youth centre. If I had to say Cheryl, everybody knows who I mean. Linda has also shown the worth and the value of the Lord Mayor's office to our city in other historic ways. She was there leading our city as we gathered together for the 50th anniversary commemorations of the award of an honorary degree by Newcastle University to Dr Martin Luther King, very much representing the values of our city held then and the values that we stand by today. And that same sense of pride in our city's radical history was on display when Linda led us in the unveiling of a plaque in my old ward of Westgate in memory of Frederick Douglass, the 19th century's most famous African-American leader, abolitionist and social reformer, and the family he stayed with in his stay in Newcastle in the 19th century. Again and again, history reminds us of what we've achieved, and I know it's been a source of great pride to Linda that she oversaw our city's part in the centenary commemorations around some women getting the vote in 1918. And I hope that the people who first got the vote in 20, in 1918 would have taken a huge amount in pride in seeing strong, successful women like Linda leading our city, uniting us together, and pushing us forward into the next stage of our journey. She capped off the year with Saturday's Aria Bulmer Freedom of the City event and parade, which was absolutely spectacular, including a fly past. Nobody could miss the huge Dakota thundering in the skies over the head, overhead above us, and also the ride in the coach, which I know was a particular highlight for Linda, along with the Lord Lieutenant and I think her grandson. That was a very exciting occasion for her. And then, of course, she finished her year with a charity ball, which in the best tradition of our Lord morality, raised money for her chosen charities, the Batten Disease Family Association, joined you with the Nicole Rich Foundation, the Children's Heart Unit at the Freeman, and the Marriquary Centre at Elswick. I know when Linda was introduced as Lord Mayor last year, comments were made about the fact that it was 20 years to the year since her mum had held the same office. And I know, Linda, that if your mum was here today, she'd be looking down with immense pride on a job well done. She's not here to say it, but we are here to say it on her behalf. Thank you, Linda, for a fantastic year in office, and may I, on behalf of the whole council, wish you all the very best for the future. Thank you.
Can I call upon councillor Anita Lower to second the vote of thanks, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Congratulations to you and to councillor Cook on your appointment. Can I also congratulate councillor Webster on his first speech in the chamber? Usually get a couple of months before we have to say that, but well done anyway. After, I mean, the first thing I want to say to Linda is congratulations for a really good year. I think it's been wonderful. You've been very successful. Both you and your predecessor councillor Stevenson have got long family association with the city and with the office of Lord Mayor. I remember very well your mother's term as Lord Mayor, and my abiding memory was of her wanting a photograph with Dodgy Weir. Now, if anyone can think of the comparison, where we ended up with your mum actually sitting on his knee. And I think, I think that just summed up her whole attitude on life and on what was there. I have to say she was a tough act to follow, but you've done that. You've made the family proud, and you've made the city proud. I'd also like to congratulate Hayley and Colin. I think they've been great support for you, along with the rest of the family, and I think they both deserve the rest. It's not great to be dragged into politics, but they've done their share, and now they can relax. I look forward to many years of working with you, but in the meantime, I do hope that you relax and enjoy this and take away the happy memories that you've given to everyone across the city and across the wider community that's come into contact with you. Congratulations.
Presentations will now be made to the retiring Lord Mayor and Lady Meress. I now call upon the retiring Lord Mayor to reply to the vote of thanks.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can I again congratulate you on becoming Lord Mayor? And if you have, as I've said earlier, half the year that I've had, you'll have a brilliant year. It has been a fantastic year. I just can't believe it's over. Yes, it is. I've done approximately 380 duties. I've had absolute thousands of photographs taken, so you can imagine why I just, you know, wasn't ready to do photographs today. Citizenship ceremonies, you literally smile for England and Newcastle, but it's, you know, they're absolutely brilliant, and you want to make the best day for your new citizens, so you do get an awful lot of photographs taken. It's that, it's that red robe. It's just like a magnet. I don't know how many selfies I've taken this year, but there you go, bless them. Not the best models. I have certainly finished on a high. Saturday was phenomenal. Starting the day with the Bulmer celebrations was great. Going in the coach was fantastic. I didn't get in the coach when my mother did her Lord Mayor's Parade, because really, Hayley and I were both part of the Rainbow Guides, Hayley as a Rainbow Guide and myself as a leader. And I got stuck on the float, and she went in the carriage with her grandma. So I was really looking forward to be in there, in there on Saturday. And then finishing with my ball. My son's not here today, obviously. He's, he's got a weakened coat. Not that he's up for anything, but he's there as a witness. And he did an absolutely phenomenal job. I don't think he was near his, his workplace at all in the fortnight, the last fortnight's run up to the ball. I do wish to put on record the thanks to all the businesses in Newcastle who donated so many prizes. It was just unbelievable. And for those, especially my good friends, the Freeman and the Fusiliers, and everyone else who bought tickets. We had a phenomenal time. It was great fun. People were dancing, people were buzzing. The civic centre put on a great show, and the food. I've had many a dinner in this city this year, and believe you me, we take some beating when it comes to food. And the compliments I have taken about our cooking is just tremendous, and I have passed that on to those that need to know. But we finished the ball as well, having celebrated my daughter's, I'll say the numbers, 30th birthday. And we did it in style. She had a fabulous cake made, which was covered in seahorses, which is the city's crest, and she got to cut the cake with the replica sword, not the original. So that was great, and everybody enjoyed that. There's been loads of highlights, loads and loads of highlights. On my, on Monday, I went to Dame Allen's school for my second visit. They asked me back again, so I must have done all right the first time. And it was the six and seven-year-olds, so year one and year two, and the questions are just unbelievable. And three of them, one was, have I had enough sleep this year? Had I had plenty clothes this year? And how many pairs of shoes did I have? I'll not give the answer because my husband's in the room. So yes, so that, you know, the children are our future, and it's great to be out there, meeting the children. And I did have one letter back following the event Frederick Douglass plaque from a child who said I'd inspired her to be Lord Mayor. I have to say, our question and answer session took place in the ladies' toilets. They were washing their hands, and I couldn't get up, so, and the boys were very jealous because they were waiting outside to, to ask the Lord Mayor's question. So that was great. I was very fortunate to go to Little Rock. I was the first Lord Mayor following the signs, the signing of the relationship between Little Rock and Newcastle, and I was invited out there and the hospitality, with the hospitality of the, the Mayor who paid for all my hotel, et cetera. And my husband and I paid for our tickets and travelled out there, and it was a remarkable week, and we got to hear Preston Clinton speak. And I wasn't a fan of Preston Clinton, I have to say, I'll be honest about that. But once you hear him speak, my goodness, he's just tremendous. It was wonderful. And of course, the eight remaining in Little Rock Nine were there, and that, that was, I mean, that's history. And you don't expect to get to meet people like that as a, just a canny lass from Throckley. So there you go. So my mum would be really proud of that. The Fusiliers took me to London, to the Tower for their Thanksgiving service, and I have to say, that service in the Chapel Royal was just, oh my goodness, the quiet, it just raised the hairs on the back of your neck. It's something I'll never forget. And the Duke of Kent was in the front row, and I was just two rows behind them, so, you know, great position in, in the chapel. And I mentioned that, and they said, well, we, we really honour and, and love the, the relationship we have with the city council, and that's why you're a VIP. So never be more than before, and never will again. So that's great. I've had, I've seen some celebrities, as you say. I was, this, this is very sad, but I was very excited to meet Suti. You know, I mean, come on, Suti, who gets to meet Suti? And also Robert Rinder, better known as Jud Rinder, who was here for quite a somber occasion, but we had a great chat about Strictly afterwards, and he was, he was grateful. And he was very proud that he'd been out in Newcastle without his jacket on on Saturday night, so he was really proud of that. So he obviously knew, did his, his research about us. As you know, my, my theme for the year has been volunteers, and I have met so many volunteers. It's just remarkable. They turn up in places that you, you wouldn't put to volunteers, and then you think, oh my goodness, you know, that's a volunteer as well. And I think probably two-thirds of the visits I've done, there's been volunteers involved some way. And I would also like to thank my two chaplains, who aren't here today, but the Reverend Pat Brooks and the Reverend Margaret Ledger, both of whom are retired now. And Pat's had a saying which she used during my inauguration, which says, volunteers don't get paid because they're useless. They don't get paid because they're priceless. And I think that's just a fantastic phrase. And I actually passed that phrase on to Princess Alexandra's lady-in-waiting when we held Princess Alexandra at the Marriquary, and she took that phrase away with her, so it's going round the country now. And it started in Newcastle, so there you go. I do want to say a huge thank you to my husband Colin. He's been so out of his comfort zone this year, but he's been there, always looking dapper, as he always does, driving me crazy because he was more worried about my hair than I was, and his hair, of course, was there. But we've had a great time. Colin has really enjoyed... course, was there. But we've had a great time. Colin has really enjoyed going to some of the historic buildings and doing some of the historic events we do. And long may our tradition continue. I have been blessed by having most of my family help me this year. I've had my sister, I've had my daughter, I've had my sons, and I've had my grandson. And my grandson came up during his, well, his time off before he went to university. And we are very proud of Daniel, who is probably the only member of Salisbury Labour Youth and is so therefore Chair. But he also was a straight A-star student, across the board, GCSEs and A-levels, and was given a place in Clare College. And that's the one thing I wish my mum had been around to sing, because my mum couldn't go to grammar school because grandma and grandad were means tested and obviously didn't have the money to buy the uniform. So to see her great-grandson down there would be fantastic. So he came up and he did two weeks with me. And I said to him, when you go to Clare College, you will meet people with titles, you will meet people with lots of money, and people with a far more privileged life than you've ever had. But none of them will have been consort to the Lord Mayor of Newcastle. And don't you forget that. So, I know, I'm rabbiting on, so I'll stop because we've got to get on. I just want to say a huge, huge thank you to Brendan and Patrick. Without Brendan and Patrick, the Lord Mayor would never get through the year. They are absolutely phenomenal. I did embarrass them both by having them on stage at my ball and gave them flowers, which, you know, that's what the Lord Mayor's for. Got to do a little bit of embarrassing. But really, they are remarkable. And we should be extremely proud that we have stuff like that. And proud that we have a Lord Mayor's office. All right, it's not all bells and whistles like everyone else. But there's a reason for that. And it's a good reason we have to make. We can't be cutting budgets and having fancy cars and lots of, I don't know, lots of, you know, bells and whistles and fancy things. But we have a tradition and that tradition is well worth keeping. And it doesn't matter how small a budget we have, we continue. And the Lord Mayors continue that tradition. So long may it stay. Like we have the 900th Lord Mayor, and a few more women, please. I have actually been banging the gong wherever I've gone, especially to the little ones. So, the last person I have to thank is, well, the last few people I've got to thank. First of all, I've got to thank my mum. I'm here because of my mum. And I have missed her this year. She would have been 100 years old on the 1st of May this year. So she would never have been round. She wouldn't have made old bones. My mum had a very poor upbringing and it didn't. But she loved her time. And it's her values that I've got. And I'd also like to say a huge thank you to all my colleagues who allowed me to become Lord Mayor. And thank you, Nick, for your support. And I thank Hazel for her support when I was Sheriff and holding my hand through these tears last year. But I'd like to finish by saying the biggest of thank yous to my daughter. Hayley has been superb. She has carried my handbag, got my cups of tea. She's just been there and ready with a cuddle when I've got upset. I've got her crying now, sorry. Yes, she had her 30th birthday and I was very proud to do all of that for her. Because it's obviously not my charity ball, it was her birthday party. But she's been a star. And I had hoped to get a picture up there, but I couldn't get them sorted out in time. So Hayley, the question Hayley's been asked, and I'm going to finish with this question, is, are you going to be the third generation of nicks and ladies to do this role? And Hayley's reply all year has been, never say never, but not yet. But she's been a party member for 17 years, so hopefully we'll get her pulled in at some point. So thank you, my lovely daughter. And thank you, my wonderful husband. And I'm sorry if the speech has gone on. I didn't even write one, it's all no. I'm just thrilled. I'm thrilled to have been Lord Mayor of Newcastle, so proud and so humble. And if I've forgotten somebody, please forgive me. But you're in my thoughts and my prayers. So thank you very much.
We will now proceed with the rest of the council agenda as set out. Those guests who wish to attend the church service are asked to form up outside the council chamber and wait to be escorted to St Thomas the Martyr Church just across the way. The new lady Mayoress and Sheriff's Lady will welcome you to stay, sorry, the new lady Mayoress and Sheriff's Lady will escort you over there. You are welcome to stay for the rest of the council meeting if you wish. Do return if you can. There will be afternoon tea in the Pandon Room, which is just off to my left as you come out of the council chamber. That will happen after the church service. So thank you very much for coming. And those who are staying on, there's more things to happen. Thank you. I hope you didn't mind me thinking of replacing you with Linda for a moment. Interesting results of the photographs of the new members. Oh, yeah. The problem is this. Yeah, I couldn't even do that, neither. Thank you very much. Can I now continue? Item number four, apologies for absence. Are there any apologies?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. We've had apologies from councillors Byrne, Putart, John Paul Stevenson, Williams and Young.
Thank you. Oh, wait. Marion Williams is here. Okay. There are no official announcements today. And we move to the introduction of new councillors. Can I firstly congratulate everyone on their election on the 3rd of May 2018. Seventy-eight councils were elected, including 55 existing councillors and 23 new councillors. Before I formally welcome the 23 new councillors, can I just say a few words? I look forward to getting to know you all in the year ahead, not only here in the council chamber and the civic centre, but also in the communities that you are now representing. Do please send me invitations, not only for coffee mornings, but anything else that I can be involved and get to know your community and all your fine people in the different parts of the city. I'll enjoy meeting everybody who make the fabric of society and bring cohesion to life in the city. So if I may, I'll just name the new councillors. And do you wish to stand up? That would be the thing, please. Councillor Linda Hobson for Blakelaw Ward. Councillor Marion Williams, Callerton and Throckley. Councillors Aidan King and Philip Lower for Castle Ward. Councillors Ernie Shorten and Olga Shorten for Chapel. Councillor Peter Lovett for Fordham and West Gosforth. Councillors Colin Ferguson, Philip Hall and Tom Woodock for Gosforth. Councillor Laura Ellis for Heaton. Councillor Anya Gerant for Canton Ward. Councillor Kyle Webster for Leamington. Councillor Thomas Gordon for Manor Park. Councillors Jane Byrne, Jamie Duskel and Rosie Hogg for Monument. Councillors Gerry Keating and Wendy Young for North Jesmond. Councillor Alastair Chisholm for Oozburn. Councillor Judy Pearce for South Jesmond. Councillor Paul Frew for Walkergate. And Councillor Rebecca Shatwell for Windgrove. Thank you. And now we move to the appointment of Leader of the Council. I call upon councillor Allison to move councillor Nick Forbes as Leader of the Council.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can I also congratulate you on your appointment for the next year? And good luck for you and your lady Mayoress. And especially happy to David and his wife for the next year. David and I worked on planning for the last five or six, seven years and had a good time as well as being colleagues. So congratulations to all. Can I move that councillor Nick Forbes be elected as Leader of the Council?
Can I call upon councillor McCarthy to second?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can I add my congratulations to you and our new Sheriff and second the proposal for Nick to be Leader of Council? Thank you.
Does council agree upon these appointments?
Agreed.
We now have the appointment of the Leader of the Opposition and Deputy Leader of the Opposition. I call upon councillor Woodock to move the following appointments. Councillor Anita Lower as the Leader of the Opposition and councillor Cot as deputy.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Congratulations to yourself on your appointment as Lord Mayor for the following municipal year. And of course, congratulations to the Sheriff, being a fellow Yorkshire exile, on his appointment to that office. Can I move that councillor Anita Lower be made Leader of the Opposition for the following municipal year and that councillor Cot be moved as his deputy?
Can I call upon councillor Hall to second?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd also like to add my congratulations to you and to the new Sheriff on your appointments. And I would like to formally second the nominations.
Does council agree these nominations?
Agreed.
Thank you. Now, the appointment of committees, subcommittees, working groups, delegated subcommittees, boards and panels for 2018-19. I call upon councillor Allison to move that the committees, subcommittees, workgroups, delegated subcommittees, boards and panels, including chairs and vice chairs set out in Appendix A circulated as amended, be appointed.
I won't read all that again, Lord Mayor. See, it's you doing it. So can I just move that, Lord Mayor?
Sorry, is that your quotes or my quotes then?
It's all right. It's all right. Don't worry. You've said it. I won't repeat it.
Okay.
Okay. Can I move that, Lord Mayor?
Sorry. Okay, well, councillor Woodock, would you second that, please?
Yes, Lord Mayor, I second it.
That's good then. Are these appointments agreed?
Agreed.
The appointment of representatives on the North East Combined Authority, Joint Authorities, Joint Committees and Other Bodies for 2018 and 19. I won't say anything now, Geordie.
Lord Mayor, can I move that the members set out in Appendix Bs, Circulated be appointed to serve as the council representatives on the bodies indicated?
Thank you. And I call upon councillor Woodock to second.
Second, Lord Mayor.
Are the appointments agreed?
Agreed.
The appointment of independent members of the Audit Committee, Standards Committee and the Independent Remuneration Panel. I call upon councillor Allison to move the report.
Lord Mayor, I move the report. I think it was agreed at a recent Constitutional Committee before I became Chief whip back at it earlier this year, that there would be a staggered, we are bringing these independent people in. It was too difficult to do this year. And I think the report is self-explanatory. What it says, we'll actually start doing that from the next municipal year. All the people who were actually there now will ask to stand again. And it would have been so difficult to move it around. So it is intended to do it in the future. But what's been asked is that we just go ahead and appoint the people who've been doing such an excellent job anyway. So I move the report.
I call upon councillor Powers to second the... At least Geordie is down here. Sorry, pardon?
Form me second, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Now, normal rules of debate apply. I don't know if you have anybody. No? These are all agreed? Okay.
Agreed.
So you agree the recommendations of the report?
Agreed.
Okay. Well, that concludes the business. Can I invite everyone to join me for the service at Thomas the Martyr Church at 3.30 and then for tea in the Pandon Room? We will leave at 3.20 from the bottom of the stairs. If you can all assemble behind the civic officer at the bottom of the red staircase, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.